Okay, we'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:02 PM. The school committee may seek to convene an open session and recess to executive session for discussion and/or action regarding those items of business exempt from open meetings under Rhode Island General Law 4246-4. And A, discussion action pending litigation potential settlement terms Perillo versus And A, discussion action pending litigation potential settlement terms Perillo versus South Kingsdale School Department, PC 2022-00700. South Kingsdale School Department, PC 2022-00700. Rhode Island General Law 4246-5A2. Rhode Island General Law 4246-5A2. B, discussion action SKHS investigation, Rhode Island General Law 4246-5A8. B, discussion action SKHS investigation, Rhode Island General Law 4246-5A8. C, discussion action terms of contract negotiation interim chief financial officer, C, discussion action terms of contract negotiation interim chief financial officer, Rhode Island Rhode Island General Law 4246-5A1. General Law 4246-5A1. And D, discussion action terms of contract negotiation digital literacy communications And D, discussion action terms of contract negotiation digital literacy communications and transportation specialist, general, Rhode Island General Law 4246-5A1. and transportation specialist, general, Rhode Island General Law 4246-5A1. Individuals have been notified including their right to have any discussion held in Individuals have been notified including their right to have any discussion held in open session. open session.
I'll make a motion to recess to executive session. I'll make a motion to recess to executive session.
Second. Second, all in favor? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, that motion passes. Thank you, that motion passes.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 7:03 PM. We'll start with the roll call. Stuart Lander?
Here.
Brad Shear?
Here.
Kate had to go to the town council meeting, but we'll try to be back later. Paula Whitford?
Yeah.
Michelle Brusso?
Yeah.
James Rustiva?
Here.
And I, Carol Vetter, am here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Do I have a motion to seal the minutes of the executive session?
I'll make a motion to seal the minutes of the executive session.
Again, all those in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes. There was one vote taken in executive session, and that will be disclosed at an appropriate time. And now I'd like to turn it over to the superintendent and the assistant superintendent for student recognitions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The committee would be so kind as to join us up front for student recognitions, please.
Welcome, everyone. It is my pleasure to bring forward student recognitions this evening. Student recognitions, we will start at the elementary level. All student recognitions at the elementary level have been brought forward by each school's principal, and we will start with Peastale Elementary. So what I'll do is I'll call up your name. I have a nice little blurb that Principal Rapore has written about you, and if you would then see Mr. Seager to get your certificate, and then a quick little fist bump going across the school committee. So, Aliana Casey. Ali? Principal Rapore says she is a consistent academic excellence and has an amazing, excuse me, and is an amazing role model for her peers, for your friends. She consistently works hard, puts in her best effort, and exhibits strong student leadership skills. She is amongst the strongest math and ELA students in her grade level, and also, and most importantly, she is kind, hardworking, and an overall amazing student. Congratulations. Nora is very shy. Nora has made amazing growth over the past year, says Principal Rapore. She is consistently performing well academically, but never settles for her high level of performance and always wants to do better. She has made amazing personal growth and comes into school with a smile every day. And that's true. Oh, well, in that case, Nora. Fist bumps all around. Hannah Sisson? Hannah has exhibited strong student skills and is a leader around the school. She has near-perfect attendance, is an active participant in class, and always strives for academic excellence. She consistently scores at or near the top of her grade level and is a positive role model for her peers and friends. Congratulations. The second member of the Statch family to be recognized from Peastale. He exhibits the same academic focus that his brother has. He takes his work seriously, puts his best foot forward, and always goes above and beyond in the classroom. He is a positive role model for his peers and models' expected behaviors for all students at all times. Damian is a hard worker who is caring and respectful. He is a high-level academic achiever and exhibits consistent excellence in the classroom. He collaborates effectively with his peers and brings out the best in others. He is always positive and is a model for what we promote for all of our students to be at Peastale Elementary. And Anais, Anais Wosencroft, thank you. AJ came to us early in his second-grade year, says Principal Rapore, and has established himself as a leader, a hard worker, and a positive member of our school community. He is known by his peers and teachers as a great student who leads by example. He is always the star of recess games, but most importantly exhibits great sportsmanship and is someone everyone looks up to. Between his academic, social, and athletic skills, he is an all-around, well-rounded student. And one last round of applause for all of our students from Peastale Elementary. And one last round of applause for all of our students from Peastale Elementary. All third graders, by the way. The future is bright with all third graders. And so now we will go to West Kingston. And Levi Northrup. Dr. Borden writes of Levi, Levi is deserving of recognition for his tremendous growth this school year. He improved his attendance and consistent engagement in class have had a direct impact on his academic progress. Levi has truly stepped up, demonstrating responsibility, resilience, and a commitment to learning that makes all in the West Kingston School Community proud. Mrs. Bertelli and I are so excited to celebrate his continued success. Congratulations. Bastian Me? Wow, that's all right. Me too. Dr. Borden says, "We're proud to give a big shout-out to Bastian for the incredible strides he's made this year. His improved attendance, increased participation, and strong academic growth have not gone unnoticed. Bastian's hard work and positive attitude are making a real difference. Miss Beth and I are both so proud of his progress and can't wait to see what he accomplishes next school year." Congratulations. Those were our West Kingston recipients, last round of applause. And now from Matunik Elementary is Tucker Lipinski. From Principal McGuire. "Tonight, I'd like to recognize Tucker Lipinski, a second grader at Matunik Elementary School, who was recently honored as principal for the day. Tucker was chosen through a school-wide raffle that celebrated students with outstanding attendance, and more importantly, those who consistently modeled kindness, perseverance, and a strong work ethic. Tucker is a shining example of these values. He led the school with pride, took his responsibilities seriously, and brought great energy and enthusiasm to the role. We are so proud of Tucker's leadership and positive impact he makes every day at Matunik Elementary. Congratulations, Tucker." And our next recognition is from Broad Rock, Broad Rock Middle School, Harry Neal. Congratulations to sixth-grade student Harry Neal. Harry wrote an outstanding essay related to the theme, "What Does Patriotism Mean to Me", for the statewide American Essay Contest sponsored by the Elks Lodge. And he won first place among sixth-grade boys who submitted essays from across the entire state of Rhode Island. For this accomplishment, Harry will be invited to a special awards dinner to acknowledge and celebrate the statewide winner at each grade level. Way to go, Harry. Everyone at Broad Rock is proud of you. And our next recognitions for South Kingston High School, could I have, is a team recognition. So would Dominic Donido, Colin Graff, Tucker Richmond, and Leo Singer, please come for it. I am pleased to introduce to you all our NASA TechRise winners. A big congratulations to Dominic, Colin, Tucker, and Leo for their amazing achievement. These incredible students were recognized by NASA for their innovative proposal to study microplastics in the atmosphere using a high-altitude weather balloon. As winners of the NASA TechRise Future Engineering Students Challenge, they'll receive $1,500 to build their experiment, a custom flight box, and a dedicated spot for their payload on a NASA-sponsored test flight. This incredible opportunity to push the boundaries of science and engineering and is also, I believe, a first for South Kingston High School. Congratulations and thank you, gentlemen. There. And now we move or continue with the high school and our Providence Journal winners, student of the week, Ethan Young. Ethan here? Nominated by the World Language Department. They said Ethan consistently demonstrates outstanding academic performance, taking on a rigorous course load that includes both honors and advanced placement classes. He is the recipient of the prestigious Rensselaer Medal for his exceptional accomplishments in mathematics and science. Ethan is a valued member of both the National Honor Society and the Spanish National Honor Society, and has earned the Seal of Biliteracy in both, in Spanish and English, showcasing his proficiency in multiple languages. Not only is he an outstanding student, but also an exceptional athlete and an active community member. Ethan is senior captain of the varsity swim team, vice president of the student council, and a volunteer firefighter for the West Kingston Fire Department. We appreciate everything that Ethan does for our school and for our community. And we are pleased to announce that Ethan was also just accepted to the U.S. Naval Academy. Congratulations. Jack Sullivan. Jack? Jack was nominated for the Providence Journal Student of the Week by the Applied Arts Department. And they stated that Jack Sullivan is a very committed and hard-working student in the Carpentry CTE. Jack is only a junior but has already made it to Carpentry VI, the highest-level carpentry class offered here at South Kingston High School. Jack learned many valuable skills along the way, as well as earning his OSHA-10 card. In class, Jack takes on the role of lead carpenter, showing other students by example how to get things done. Jack is also a standout varsity athlete on the football and track-and-field team and an all-around great student. Congratulations. Kai Sorlin? Nominated by the School Counseling and Guidance Department. Kai is a South Kingston High School junior, also in the Carpentry CTE program, and is the perfect example of a great student and athlete. In the classroom, Kai's dedication to his studies is remarkable and is noticed by all his teachers. His academic and personal growth has been outstanding since freshman year. He has excelled in challenging courses throughout his high school, including accelerated honors Algebra II pre-calculus course. According to his teachers, Kai consistently takes every opportunity in class and sets the bar for his academic excellence. Kai is an exceptional leader whose quiet humility, kindness, and hard work have helped him serve as a role model to his peers. Kai is an avid athlete and serves as a key member of the track-and-field team and football teams, and has earned state and regional recognitions in both sports. As a 10th grader, Kai finished third in Rhode Island and sixth in New England in the javelin. Since his freshman year, Kai has served as the extra-point and field-goal kicker for the varsity football team, and this year was a key contributor to the Division II State Championship team. Kai has successfully balanced both his academics and athletics since his freshman year. And in his spare time, spare time, Kai enjoys exercising as a test of his fitness level and endurance. Congratulations. Bonnie Moore? Bonnie was nominated by the Mathematics Department, and they stated, Bonnie is a senior at South Kingston High School and a standout mathematician. In her senior year, Bonnie has taken on both AP Calculus and AP Statistics, earning As in both classes this past semester. She excels in both classes and stands out for her keen ability to solve problems and think both abstractly and quantitatively. Bonnie is also a dedicated varsity tennis player, demonstrating leadership and teamwork on the court, as well as in her math classes. Congratulations. Thank you. And we have a few more recognitions, but I'll ask for one last round of applause for all of our academic achievements. And at this time, I'm pleased to ask up to the podium Athletic Director Lynch to present our sports achievement awards tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Pedrosa. Appreciate that. I'll start. I'll be, we've got a few here, so we'll run through these. First one is our Coach of the Year, the Coaches Association Wrestling Coach of the Year, our wrestling coach for the past 30-odd years, James Barbera. James is a South Kingston graduate, too, so he's been, he's a lifer. Our, I want to recognize some athletes at this point. Our first person that we'd like to recognize, won the state championship in wrestling at 190 pounds. A unique thing in this regard is he became, his dad was a wrestler, his dad was a state champion. First time ever in the, in the history of South Kingston, we've had a father and son. Dante Pino won the 190 wrestling tournament this year, so congratulations. I'll recognize him. I don't think he's here, but I just want to recognize him. Ben White. Ben White placed second in the state tournament at 138 pounds. He did a great job for us this year. I'm going to bring the next three people up at the, at the same time. Jackson White, Will Erot, and Ethan Young, please. These guys were part of the 200 free relay winning team. If you know, if you know swimming at all, you're saying, where's the fourth person? We, we let a Proud person come with us to, to be a state champion. We don't recognize them. I also want to recognize Jackson White. Jackson was a second-team All-State in the 200 Free, so it's a great accomplishment for him as well. And the, the boys' co-op team with Proud, they came in second in the state by just a couple of points. I think Bishop Penner can beat them by maybe two or three points, so a great showing at the state meet. Our next athlete that we'd like to recognize is our second-team All-State in Gymnastics, Katherine McCollum. Katherine did a great job on the gymnastics team, and as I said, second-team All-State this year. Tremendous, tremendous accomplishment. Then I'm going to bring the next crew up as, again, as well. I'd like to bring up Matt Clark, Kai Sorline, Christian Gates, and, excuse me, Gales, and Quinn Matos. These guys were second-team All-State in the four-by-four hundred-meter relay. They did a tremendous job. They set several school records along the way this year, and they did a nice job. And as you can see, Quinn is dressed, the baseball team just won in advance to the, the winner's bracket of their pod. They beat East Providence three to nothing. Quinn had a, Quinn had a key hit in the ballgame today and will be our starting pitcher on Thursday up at Cumberland. So congratulations to all these guys. Thank you.
And that concludes our student recognitions for this evening. While folks are certainly welcome to stay and enjoy open democracy, it is also understandable if you wish to exit at this time, as you have other, if you have other commitments. Again, thank you and congratulations.
Settle in. You ready?
Settle in.
We're not going anywhere quick. One of the mothers came up to me, "My husband's getting recognition. I'm supposed to play softball tonight." I said, "Well, do you want a brownie?" She said, "No, I might be playing." So she took two for her, her, her son and her son's friend. Oh, shit. Got to have some fun, Frank. That was, by the way, one of my recommendations that were true.
All right, thank you. It's always a joy to recognize the wonderful students we have here in the district. That will bring us to comments from the community.
Doral Beasley?
Doral Beasley.
Welcome, Doral.
Uh, good evening. So, um, I did it again, right? Cleared the room for you. So, um, last week I, I was working on a report. On, uh, on our schools and how our, our, uh, our assessment. Our assessments and our, uh, school star reports I've done over the years. So I went back to the first year when the Rycast assessment test came online. That was twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school year. So since then, we've had, um, seven years of testing. Well, we've had seven years, but only five years of testing because nineteen, twenty and twenty twenty-one, uh, those tests were suspended because of COVID. So we only have really five years of data to look at. So in those five years, the first three years, we had seven schools online. Um, that was where there was an eight, then the next so that was in the eighteen and nineteen. And then when we started up again in, uh, twenty-two, we had seven schools and then twenty-three would drop to six. When Curtis Corner was closed and then dropped again, um, to five. So now we have five. So we had seven schools open for three years. That's twenty-one. Twenty-one reports, six and five. So a total of thirty-two reports over those five years for our schools. So in those thirty-two reports, we've had three two-star schools in those five years, twenty-three three-star schools, five four-star schools and one five-star school. That was Matunik one year. Matunik was this five-star school. Now, when you look at this report here on the top page, which I printed right out of, um, right off the ride website. South Kingston twenty twenty-four accountability summary, summary reports. This is the report from last year's assessment exams that were taken in the spring of twenty twenty-four. And about the middle of that page, it shows that we had three three, three-star schools and two four-star schools now. So for all these years, and all this effort, all this money, I don't believe we've done very well. So when you look at the bottom of the page there, it's the reasons why the same thing keeps popping up over and over again. Achievement of growth, achievement in the growth. School after school. But it's all linked to what's on the next page. Schools are low performing student subgroups. So when your, when your school is not a five-star school, it's because you have a low performing one or more low performing subgroups within that school. So if you have one low performance subgroup, you can only be a four-star. And if you have two, you can only be a three-star. So when you look at those four stars, those four schools there, the subgroup that, that is, um, shown in each, each time is students with disabilities. Now I've talked about this before. We have we have not, we have not provided the resources that our students with disabilities need to, um, to achieve what they need to achieve. You often find them in the not, um, in the lower the lower two quadrants of the assessment exams. And I've talked about this next statement before also. We have a high rate in South Kingston of out of school suspension for students with disabilities. And I, I, I still can't understand why we would ever send a student with a disability home on a suspension. Now, I've talked about this before, but I've never heard I've never heard this school committee talk about this issue. And much like the a couple of years when I was talking about chronic teacher absenteeism at many, at many a meeting. That issue also never became an agenda item. Now, this year in South Kingston, we're spending sixty-eight and a half million dollars to educate our students. That's, that's the total budget for twenty-two hundred and fifty-three students. That's over thirty thousand dollars a student. Now I haven't factored out the students that are leaving the district, out of district tuitions. That'll, that'll show up on the, on the, on the ride report. A year from next month for this year, but if you look at the second page that I gave you, twenty twenty-five special education for people. What does it show? Okay, those numbers are two years old. I've already looked at the numbers for twenty, uh, for twenty-four and twenty-five. Amount of money we're spending on, on, uh, uh, specialized services. It's higher than that number there. But that number there on that page, on these two pages, that number, that number, folks, is the highest in the state of Rhode Island. Okay? The highest. So we're spending the most money per, per special education student in the state. And yet it keeps showing up here. And that's the reason why we don't have four and five-star schools. That's the only thing that's keeping us away, away from four and five-star schools. If we want to attract more students, more families to come to this town and try and at least slow down the decline we've had in enrollment for the last twenty-some years. We have to get our schools back up to the four and five-star levels because that's East Greenwich, Barrington that, that have had basically level, level enrollments for twenty, for two decades. People are still paying the freight to go to those towns to put their, to get, to put their children in those public schools, just like they used to do here thirty years ago. We need to get back to that. And I really, really hope that you'll talk to your superintendent, your assistant superintendent and that that's become an agenda item for this summer so that
Thank you, Doral. Um, it's going a little long, but I, I just want to just for in, for information. This is one of the things in our equity audit that also pointed to students with disabilities. So we will be talking about this in the context of the equity audit. But thank you for bringing it to our attention, but that's where you'll see us address it. Okay?
Okay, because it's so important.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Would anybody else like to come to the podium? With that, we'll close public comment. Thank you. That will bring us to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes. Okay, that's going to bring us to school committee business. A, the, um, discussion informational presentation regarding late start times presented by, later start times presented by Brown University Health and Bradley Hospital. I'm going to ask, um, Brad if he wants to, um, say something on this item.
Yeah, thank you. I, I guess we, we have a guest speaker. We were supposed to have two, but one had, uh, had to pull out, uh, at the last minute, but this is, uh, an issue that the wellness committee has been talking about since our first meeting this year. Um, I think it's been talked about for over a decade, um, in the, in the district. But, uh, several districts in the state have moved back their school start times because of what we're going to learn about tonight. And I just really want to express my appreciation for Dr. Douglas. Dr. Megan Douglas, um, came down to help our community. She gets nothing out of that, except maybe good feelings, hopefully. Um, but Dr. Douglas, uh, recently retired from Brown medicine as a clinical assistant professor. She's board certified in pediatrics and internal medicine. Um, and for our, uh, interest especially, she was on the Barrington School Committee. So she has some particular perspective. And I think when they moved the, the start times back. Um, and the, the presentation was co-created, um, between Dr. Douglas and Dr. Lauren Weinstein, who some of you know, because Dr. Weinstein has two children in the district. Uh, Dr. Weinstein is a clinical psychologist and a professor of psychology and human behavior at Brown, not Brown Medical, but old style Brown, I guess. I don't know what you call the two different things. Um, but, uh, thank you. I'll turn it over to Dr. Douglas and her. So, and I'll just say that the, the feeling of the wellness committee was the first step was to just sort of level set everyone, starting with the school committee and then the community as a whole, to understand why we would consider this before we move forward and really think about the how. We want everyone to understand the why and, and why this might make a difference for, for the students, which is what it's all about. So sorry. Now I'll turn it over to Dr. Douglas.
Got it. Is that working? Perfect. Okay. Um, well, thank you for having me. Uh, Lauren was very sorry she couldn't be here, um, but she's hoping that her son makes us offer teeth. Um, so we're going to be just talking about teens, school and start time, just as a general kind of overview. Um, pretty brief, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time here and, uh, there's going to be opportunity for questions. I don't know how to go forward.
Them to advance the slide for you and they should.
So why talk about sleep? So, uh, sleep and teens. So the ideal amount of sleep for a teenager is nine to nine and a half hours. Um, as you would probably not be surprised, uh, a vast majority don't get anywhere near that amount of time. Um, there, the estimates based on national, uh, surveys is that about three in ten actually get that amount of sleep. Sleep, as we know, is essential for brain development, which is obviously happening at high rates in adolescents. Um, it's also really important for mood stability. We all know what we feel like if we hadn't had a good night's sleep. It's just a little bit harder to, um, feel good about things during the day. Um, it's, uh, been shown to be very important for effective learning and memory, right? So, uh, as we're sleeping, our brains are actually forming the memories. Which is essential for learning. And, um, it's also been shown to be very, very effective for injury, uh, prevention, right? So driving while sleepy, driving while tired um, is a really good way to have a car accident, biking, scootering, whatever you want to do. Why is this an issue for teenagers? Because the circadian rhythm, the thing that tells us when to go to sleep shifts. So most of us, uh, toddlers know that they kind of go to sleep earlier, like maybe the sun is setting and they're, they're out. Um, teenagers are like, you know, my daughter always goes to sleep after me. So, um, uh, and, and that's because their circadian rhythm for most teenagers um, puts them to sleep somewhere around eleven o'clock at night. Um, and as you remember, they need nine to nine and a half hours, which would mean that they really should be sleeping until eight or eight-thirty in the morning ideally. So what happens when teens, although really all people, I'm speaking from experience right now because I have two senior dogs that are getting me up about three to four times a night and I I'm thinking about what caffeine I need to get home. Um, so, uh, the, the main things that we see in teenagers are mood disruption, right? So, um, anxiety, depression, irritability. These are things obviously that have been at the top of, um, of concern for teenagers in general. This is one of the things that can contribute. Impaired executive functioning. So maybe you get a reasonable amount of homework, but it takes you much longer to do that homework because it's hard to plan. It's hard to process that. Risk-taking behaviors. When you're not well rested, you don't make the best decisions. Um, I think many people can speak with experience there. Um, obviously school tardiness because it's harder to get up in the morning. Um, kids getting up for school at six o'clock is the equivalent of an adult getting up at three o'clock in the morning. We wouldn't do well at three o'clock in the morning. Um, kids have a hard time at six. School performance and participation. If you're not awake, you don't really participate. Hard to learn, like we talked about before. And obviously like my comment about caffeine, um, you tend to, when you're tired, have more stimulant use of nicotine, caffeine. Driving is a specific problem and, um, and they've uh, established multiple times in multiple studies that there's increased thoughts of suicide when you have chronic sleep deprivation. Uh, so we know sleep is important, um, and we know teenagers don't get enough. So what, what do we do about that? Um, so there's a, a list of things that we can do, right? This isn't a one size fits all kind of situation. Um, sleep hygiene, uh, you can read lots of articles about it. Are we good at it? Probably not. We're all trying to be better, right? Um, getting cell phones out of the, out of the bedroom at night. Um, some school districts have done challenges to see, because people, um, Barrington just did a challenge success, uh, survey where we found that kids that don't have their phone in their room get thirty more minutes of sleep per night compared to kids who do have their, their phone in their room. Um, and that's consistent with national data. Homework time management. Like I said, it's harder to get the work done in a timely manner. Um, I still remember my older daughter coming home from practice at nine-thirty and then trying to read the chapter for US, um, A push for AP US history. And it was just excruciating to watch because it's just very hard to process all that information and get it in. She did it, but I'm not sure how. The other thing is to look at, um, helping students and families make realistic kind of plans for the day, right? So, um, uh, I've worked at, with adolescents for many years. And one of the things that we pull out is a piece of paper and we go through and we say, so this is how much time you should sleep. This is how much time you should eat. This is how much time you should spend with your family. This is how much time you're in school. And then you go, okay, so what else are you going to do? And they're all trying to live twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty-hour days in twenty-four hours. Many of us are, but it's much harder for a teenager because we can do okay on eight hours and they should be getting nine to nine and a half hours. And then lastly, which is why I'm here, is to talk about changing the actual schedules so it aligns with the circadian rhythms of teenagers. So many people recommend this. Um, they all recognize that it's not a quick thing. It's not something you can just do, um, overnight. But the AAP, the American Academy of Child Endocentric Psychiatry, the AMA, the NEA has a, a section in their guidelines that recommend that schedules are aligned to the biologic sleep rhythms of students. The CDC continues to recommend it, even with the change in their website. And in true nonpartisan fashion, both California and Florida have recently passed laws that high schools should start no later, no earlier rather than eight thirty. The reason they make this recommendation is because in districts that have made this change, and this has been going on since the nineties. It really started in Minnesota, way up in the dark north. Is that when you move sleep start times, kids sleep longer and it's been shown again and again and again. They are more alert during the day. A lot of administrators will report that their kids are more interactive, that they actually are paying attention better during the day. You have reduced reports of mental health challenges, mood disruptions, et cetera. You also have fewer sports injuries, which is, given the number of ACL injuries I've heard of lately, it's a nice thing to do. A really significant reduction in motor vehicle accidents across three states. They found a sixty five to seventy percent reduction, which is unheard of for an intervention. And then academic outcomes are listed there, but they're they do better in their first period class. They get to school on time. GPA is better. And perhaps related to the gentleman who just spoke, children with learning disabilities or disorders or or differences and children with ADHD actually seem to have an outsized benefit from getting better sleep. So this is what Lauren provided, so I'm just going to put it up because I don't I can't speak to this. So this is this is old data. Nobody's asked this question nationally, so it's probably shifted because it's been 10 years. But the the average start time for high schools across the United States in 2015, 2016 was seven fifty nine. I am originally from California. I've lived all over the country. And when I moved to New England 20, 30 years ago, I was like, wait, what time do you guys go to school? It's a very relatively early start time compared to other parts of the country. I worked in Braobith, Massachusetts for many years, and the kids there started at seven fifteen. Some of the kids are getting on buses at five thirty and by school, we never had buses, so we always started after eight thirty. So no buses makes life easier. And that's where you guys are. So in Rhode Island, there's been a number of schools have shifted. Barrington shifted in 2019, 2020. That's when I was the chair, so I helped the superintendent walk through that process. But we have been discussing it for 10 years. The and the high school now starts at eight thirty, the middle school starts at eight forty five and the elementary start on both sides of eight AM. He we recently did a challenge success survey, like I mentioned before, and we found that the kids are getting seven point four hours of sleep, which is up significantly from the six point five, I believe it was previously. East Greenwich did it before Barrington in 2016, 2017. I'm not aware of any follow-up data. Mount Pleasant and Hope High Schools both started eight fifty, Lincoln High School eight thirty. You can see the others. Narik Ansett, I believe, changed most recently. Mount Hope High School changed and nobody even noticed about 10 years ago to eight AM. And then Massachusetts, there's been a big shift. So best state in the nation for education and Newton recently changed in 2021 to 2022. They shifted in both Newton North and Newton South start at nine AM, which is most consistent with the data. So why haven't every why hasn't everybody already changed? Well, it took me 10 years to help Barrington do it, but what needs to be considered? So change, of course, is never easy. We all recognize that. The things that have to be considered when you're thinking of this change are transportation. Transportation is actually why we have the schedules we have now. So before the 1970s, kids went to school after eight. It was the gas crisis of the late seventies when we all had to wait in line, which caused everybody to shrink the number of buses that they had. And then that caused everybody to flip and squeeze things into a tighter practice. The after-school activities and responsibilities, childcare for younger students. I would say this is my highlight is the capacity to find creative solutions, right? Because you're taking something that's been this way for a while and you're looking for something different. You have to recognize that there's a natural resistance to change. And that's why the why is very important. If your goal is to make this better for teenagers, you just have to keep remembering that that's why you are doing this. A tendency to focus on anecdotes. So as we were making the process, we had some of the longest school committee meetings in the history of Barrington. And I would hear about how something was going to negatively impact one or two students or these two students. And so we just kept going back to this is about most of the students most of the time. And that was one of our guiding. And it's hard when you've when it's how we've always done things, it it has an impact on everybody. Some people think, oh, it's just going to be the teachers that have a hard time or just the families. No, students tend to be uncomfortable with this amount of change. And and the community has to kind of figure some things out. So as as on that previous slide, others have found a way. So the data clearly supports that a later start time is beneficial for the physiologic reality of teenagers. And as the primary responsibility of the school district is the well-being and the academic outcomes for teenagers or for students, it makes sense that this is something that you consider looking at. And Lauren wanted me to make sure that we said this, and I think it's it's obvious because this is true of like almost every educational initiative that comes through, is that it's not a one size fits all. It's not like you go, oh, Barrington did this, so we'll do exactly the same thing. That's not how this works. Everybody has to kind of look at the information, figure out what's the right thing for them, what's needed in a community, and then move forward from there. Does anybody have any questions?
Just I think we all, so the presentation is in the board docs, and you'll see if you continue past this, there's some there's some additional reading you could do.
Yeah, there's a number of references or links to the groups that have made the recommendation. There's also some frequently asked questions, right? Like, don't kids just stay up later and get less sleep? What about the student athletes? We actually, John Sullivan, who's the sports psychologist for the Patriots, practices at Newport. He is a strong advocate, not specifically for start time change, but for sleep in students and athletes. So he's worked with the NFL and the NBA to make those better for them.
Can you just talk to us about what you know? Or maybe you'll have to tell us to go do our own research. Some of the districts that have done the the change in time in start times for their high school and their middle school, I knew Barrington do it did it a few years back. And so my brain as a former high school teacher goes to, okay, if we're starting at eight thirty instead of seven fifteen, and I'm referencing where I taught.
Okay.
Then instead of getting out of school at one thirty, our kids are going to get out of school at two forty five. Now that takes and pushes everything later. The homework, the sports practices, the games, the jobs. But I mean, like, I could sit here till time, you know, till the end of the month and come up with all the things that teenagers do. How how does that?
So how does that work?
How do yeah, how does it impact? You know, like I said, sports and and not that that we live, you know, in our districts, in our schools for sports. We look for academic outcomes, but the kids are going to get involved in the sports anyway.
So Barrington has the same number, if not more, students participating in athletic activities since we changed the start time. George Finn, kudos to George Finn. He worked with a team of parents and teachers to find alternative schedules. He worked with the YMCA to figure out a school, a pool schedule. This is that capacity part I talked about, like you you have to have enough people that have the time to figure it out. Initially, we were like, oh, maybe we can't use the why, so we're going to have to look at using health tracks and CCONC. Well, then actually the why flipped and we made it work, so that happened. The this the other part that's important to remember is that when you're well rested, you're more efficient at actually getting things done. So the that homework component is really. So I have three kids. My son is yay graduating from college next month. So he only got one year of this, and of course, that was the year of COVID, so who knows? And then my other, my daughters have both had this for the entire time. And the they are ridiculously busy. They all do sports. And they actually still are going to bed at ten thirty to eleven at night because they get their homework done in a more efficient way. They're not falling asleep in the afternoon. My son used to take naps after school in order to be able to go do the things in the evening. I would also say sports in the in the high school setting, if you're on a team sport at the high school, yes, you do tend to practice right after school. But if you're involved in any community level sports, so my kids dance and fence and play club soccer, their practices were all at seven, seven thirty, eight anyway. So they're already still not getting home until nine thirty, ten anyway. So to expect that they would then be able to get up for us, I mean, Barrington started at seven forty and I thought that was too early. But the that was the that was the idea. So there there it's it's a creativity, a capacity for creativity. And and really that all of those districts have done it with no no loss in their activities or their ability to have kids doing the 5,000 million things that they still do anyway. So.
So I had kind of put out of my brain, even though I know it, that when you're well rested, you're more efficient and your executive functioning does a better job. So I would just suggest that we kind of make a mantra out of that because I think we need to remind families if we decide to go in this direction. But I mean, having three children of my own, they're adults now, but I remember those six thirty getting up out of bed times. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, being on the wellness committee, we we've we've had several presentations done. And the one thing that kept coming up were questions about, well, how do we do this and how do we do that? And what if and what at and and what we came to realize is the most important thing in the entire process to make, to take a really a look at if this is something we want to do is first and foremost, basically what doctor, I'm sorry, Dr. Douglas actually presented is the why. And the focus must remain on the why first. And then create a process that will help us identify all the stakeholders because there are a tremendous number of stakeholders involved as outlined here who need to bring input, including students, especially students, including parents and the community. Everybody here, people from sports, transportation. So all of those people need to become part of the process to really figure it out. We're not going to figure this out here or by having a couple of more meetings. It took them 10 years, so that's my question.
It doesn't need to take years.
Thank you. Thank you. So.
It it shouldn't take 10 years.
Well, well, we're already past the 10-year mark from what I heard.
Yeah, so we we've been talking about, we talked about it a long time, too. Yeah.
Yeah, so here's my question actually for you. Is what did you learn to help condense that in the process that you helped? Basically, you bring forward and then, yeah, I I think that's what is.
Yeah, I think that's it's that's I I think this is similar. So I had at that time, of course, we'd been going through this process and multiple iterations of possibles. And I was attending multiple lectures about how other places had done it. And pretty consistently, it's bringing the shareholders to the table together and having a essentially a working group. This can't be just the superintendent and the finance person, like it just can't be that. There's too many factors. There's too many things. Like I could say, oh, you could do exactly what we did, but I don't know, maybe you have more kids that need an alternate bus schedule. I don't know. The the cool part about where you're at is the bus scheduling is way more computerized. I think the first time we tried to do it, it was still an Excel spreadsheet and there were like index cards or something. But now you can actually run different scenarios with your bus company and they'll do it for you. So it's really, though, it's the shareholders coming together, identifying what the challenges would be. And our one of our former administrators like to say, like, let's just keep identifying the opportunities, not the obstacles, right? So easy to find the obstacles, but if you flip those obstacles into opportunities, I would say our swim team has been doing pretty darn good with this later start time because rested swimmers swim even faster. So.
Yeah, one of the best quotes I heard in the presentation given to us is, don't let perfection get in the way of doing something good. And that really hit home when it came to this particular issue.
That's where the most of the students, most of the time, there there's going to be somebody who's not well served by this, but it's much easier to figure out an alternative for that student than it is to kind of say, well, all of these hundreds of high school students are going to be tired because this one student needs this one schedule. So it's most of the students, most of the time, and your why is because kids need sleep. And we've shown that later start time helps kids get more sleep.
Clearly, I came in as you were wrapping it up.
Yeah.
However, I'm a I'm a major advocate proponent for this. I've had many a discussion with Lauren. I I'm just sad. I'm glad you were here to present. I'm just sad she would not. I I I love that we're we're bringing it back to this table and hopefully can can really start to to move forward with it. And I will say that my favorite thing that as I scroll through your presentation, I was just having this conversation with my daughter around the quote, how we've always done things. That, to me, is the antithesis of an educational community to say, well, it's how we've always done it. Oh, really? Because I thought as educators, we're supposed to, you know, grow and evolve and you learn and find new ways and be creative. So I love that you included that. I love what you just said, where perfection can be the enemy of progress. Awesome. So I look forward to actually seeing seeing something being done in this direction and hopefully it won't take 10 more years. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for your presentation as well because I am a strong advocate for this. I have those children that don't sleep, don't get up, they're late. You know, sometimes absent, not doing well academically because they're tired. They come home, they go to bed instead of wanting to go and do something active. They want to go to sleep, you know. So I know also by talking to other parents in the community, I'm not alone. I am not alone and we do need to do something. We need to figure it out. And I don't think that it's really going to be a hard thing to figure out. I think where we're going to meet the challenges is that, you know, we have some parents that may not have an other alternative for where they're going to put their young children or those older children, you know what I'm saying? There's there's always a little challenge there, but I think with we have opportunities for extended daycare in most of our schools, in our local recreation centers, YMCA. We do have that, and I I just think that we haven't pushed enough for parents to look out for.
Right, it's it's making an opportunity, right? And that's where you. Right. It's, it's making an opportunity, right? And that's where you, you use your shareholders to find out what are the challenges that we might face? And then figure out how do we use our resources to make those possible for people?
Hey, bringing, and Stuart mentioned it too, bringing stakeholders to the table to have discussion. Is that more like a, we're doing a presentation tonight. We don't know how many votes are actually listening. And this is the kind of thing that I think we should be rallying around, getting more people into the room, sitting at the table, having a conversation about. Because again, we don't know how many people is listening. We could just be having this conversation amongst ourselves or we know. Right? So getting the word out there that this is potentially a path forward. Would you have a public forum?
We, um, we had a public forum. Um, we also had, um, school committee members or at the time we had kind of representatives of the school committee would go to PTO meetings and talk about what we were thinking about, but it was really not the how. Again, and again, it is not the how, it is the why. And you do the why, and you do the why, and you do the why. Um, but then after a while, you recognize that not everybody is going to buy into the why. You just gotta, at a certain point, you just kind of say, okay, we did our best. We educated as best we can. But we know as the people who are making this decision that, um, this is a valid why. And, um, and then, then you move forward. Um, yeah.
So I have been sitting at this table for 13 years. And we discussed this as a, something that we thought was a good idea back when I started. Um, I really like it to see it move forward and I would suggest to our chair and vice chair that perhaps, you know, um, our, our bylaws say that we have a business meeting and a work session each month. And if we're going to move back to that uh, model, I would suggest that this would be a perfect first work session as a community forum, as a, as a work session for the school committee, community input, however we word it or put it out there, but I think that's probably a good idea.
I just wanted to preface this by saying, I think this is a, a, a good idea. And I see that there are a lot of benefits. I just want to kind of play devil's advocate. Are there any cons that have been, uh, brought forward other than the obviously kind of incidental anecdotal type, type of cons? And have there ever been any schools that have decided to go back to an earlier start time after implementing something like this? I'm.
So, so the, I'll take the second question first. So that, um, I, I believe Newport tried to do a switch, but my understanding was the challenge they ran into, and this is why I said you need to make sure that everybody's at the table, is that they share buses with different high schools. There's kids coming in from different places. Um, and so that's where you have to make sure that you know you're taking care of everybody that's associated with your school district, right? Like you can't just say, well, our three schools, our four schools are going to do the change. You've got to make sure that it's working for everything else. Cause we bus, like in Barrington, we bus to St. Luke's, uh, school, which is in town. But we had to make sure that it worked with their times too. Like you couldn't just say, sorry, St. Luke's, you need to change your start time. That's not literally how it works, right? So, um, so, uh, so, so I think that's where the Newport thing puts back. I do not know them well, so I don't know if there were other issues that came up, but my, um, bird's eye view was that they didn't have everybody at the table. Um, there are some places that have kind of like inched back and I'm not sure why that happens. I think that has partly to do with forgetting the why. Um, and then there are some places that have wanted to change forever. I worked with the principals or the superintendent in Cumberland, but they just never could get any money to make the buses work. So, um, they're, they still start very early. Um, and I think he actually retired. So he, it, uh, that ended. Um, uh, sorry, what was the first question you had about like, oh, challenges? So um, in Barrington, there are still some teachers specifically at the high school. Like if you've worked in a district for 20, 25 years, you, you have an expectation about how things are. Um, and you have your childcare set up to accommodate that. Um, there were some coaches that left who were teachers. They said it went too late, but all of those teams were then taken over by parents who couldn't previously coached because it happened too early in the day. So like this is that obstacle opportunity thing is that recognizing that there's lots of different ways to do things and and, and maybe there are opportunities that you're not aware of. Um, uh, that, that would be the main thing. The, uh, uh, elementary teachers, we went earlier for elementary. They were all very happy. Their kids show up ready to learn and they're, they're going, right? Cause little kids wake up way earlier than teenagers.
Yeah, I guess, um, I guess a couple of follow up question on uh, the financial impact, as you mentioned something about the cost of the busing, uh, is, is it, have you seen or have you noticed or maybe don't know, but, um, is there net positive and or net negative financial impact?
It, it depends on how you've been running busing, right? Like if you've been running a very, 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 very tight bus, which is what Barrington had been doing, like we had not been busing most of our students. Um, when they shifted, there was, we had to add two buses. So that was the cost. Um, the, uh, referenced in the document is something that, um, uh, Dr. Weinstein has also shared before, which is that Brookings Institute looked at the, um, the benefit, but the financial benefit, and that there's actually a substantial benefit, even if you have to spend some money because the outcomes for school are so much better. So the educational outcomes are outweighed by any cost going in. Um, but it's primarily busing, right? Like that's, busing tends to be the big thing that takes the, it's the hardest thing to figure out. If you have a relatively simple thing though, where you look at flipping, some districts haven't paid any extra money because they just flip flopped it, right? So, um, we just, Barrington has four school levels, which made it much more complicated.
So it's going to be another, one of my questions is, you know, did, did, would you recommend looking at flipping the, the times? It sounds like that might, it might depend be district dependent kind of.
Yep. It's definitely dependent. I see some of the schedules that got put out by other districts and they're like, oh, our elementaries are going to go at nine thirty. And I just think as a working parent, I, I can't actually imagine, and I'm thirty start time for elementary. Um, it's much harder to find daycare in the morning than it is to find daycare in the evening. Um, so you, you know, but that's, that's one of those things where you look at what your district needs, right? So there was a district in Virginia that said, um, oh, uh, our kids are going to be able to work. And then there were a bunch of kids that came forward and said, we actually work from nine to midnight, or we work with our dad in the high schools, cleaning the high schools or something like that. And so they actually, they were, they were like up later than anybody else. They, they needed that and they benefited more from having it. So you just, you got to find out what people are, what people need, right? And it's unique to every district. So that's the one size does not fail.
Yeah. So, thank you again, Dr. Douglas for coming. I just to get back to what the wellness committee has been talking about is really that, um, and we had a sort of a zoom interaction with a school district in, was it Virginia? Is that, maybe it was the same one, Maryland, Virginia?
Ray, Raynor. I don't know where it was. Yeah.
So they, I mean, they, so they changed their start times. The, the school committee chair at the time created a nonprofit to advocate for doing the same thing throughout their state. Um, is how we got connected to them, but their process, I mean, when they started in earnest, we've been talking for more than a decade, but when they really started this process in earnest, it took them about two years, um, because of how much feedback they were trying to collect and how, you know, careful they were about the process and, and didn't just move too fast to come to a conclusion really, really hurt everybody. So, um, I don't think we should imagine that, you know, we're not, we know we're not moving start times next, uh, in the fall. Um, and I would hope it's not going to take us, uh, another 10 years, somewhere in between there. But, uh, what we've been talking about, the committee is starting to have these kinds of forums, do more education, really identify those stakeholders and and strongly encourage them to come in and let them know that this is a serious discussion. I think the district looked at this about a decade ago. Superintendent sent out a survey, said, do you want to move back start times? And as you would, most people said, no, you know, why would I, they're not thinking, they don't know the why. There was no explanation of the why. There was no discussion. It was just, do you want to do it? Majority said no, and that closed the book on the discussion essentially. There might've been a little more than that, but, um, but that was pretty much it. Yeah. Kate was here. Um, so we don't want to do that. I think what we want to do is really enter into it with sort of an open mind to hearing everybody and encourage as many stakeholders as we can to come to the table and have what is probably a series of discussions. We're not starting at a great time of year to have these kinds of forums, but I think it's probably multiple, maybe focused on different stakeholders. You know, at different times, it's convenient for them to be there, but, um, and, and I think it was suggested one, one of the administrators on the committee that really some of the, um, nuts and bolts of the how are really best suited to the administration. Um, you know, what, what time are the buses going to run? What happens at the first, you know, when school starts, are we going to direct traffic differently? Or, you know, those are things that personally, like I'm not going to contribute to that very, very well, but the school principals need to, the administrators need to, the, um, you know, the people who run our transportation systems need to, but I think it helps if we have a group that's really solely focused on why we would do this. And hearing from people who have concerns about it and we can, and, and then continuing to say the how is going to be a district job, right? That's not what this forum is about. How, you know, how many buses is going to be more or less? That we're going to find out later. Um, and you know, the sports teams, yes, that's a concern. How are we going to do that? That might not, you know, the, the how again, is it going to be a different pool? I don't know. We're going to have to find that out. Um, but that, so that's, that's our thinking of the committee. We don't have an action item on the agenda tonight, but that's sort of the committee plan is to try to, and, and maybe it is a school committee meeting where we, where we have a forum like this to just keep educating the community at this stage is to get the concept out and why we would do it and, and can continuing to just be informers and educators as we should be about, about the subject and what the benefits might be. And the, I've talked to people casually and their first thing is, well, they're going to stay up later. And no, we have data that says they, they're not just going to stay up later and you know, what are they going to do? You know, that my kid has so much homework, they could never get it all done in time. And well, we know they do their homework faster, right? And maybe if they have so much homework that they can't get all their homework done, we have to look at why we're assigning so much homework, um, which could lead us down a, you know, it's sort of a different path, but, um, so I think this is really, we should think of this as the beginning of what could be a lengthy process. We're going to have a new school in two years, right? So maybe, maybe that's our sort of soft target is that that new school opens at a different, different start time. Um, yeah.
Based on the experience that I had, I would set some kind of end date. Like I wouldn't say like, oh, we're going to talk about this again. And then not have a time, like I would come up with a time. Obviously you can't do this here because you can't vote. The other thing that we found helpful was that we set some parameters around it. So it doesn't make sense if you're going to have, um, oh, the high school students are going to get to go to school when the sun is up, but we're going to have the five year olds waiting for the bus in the dark. We said, no, that's not okay. Right? So not, nobody in Barrington gets picked up before seven fifteen. That's actually why we had to add a bus was because we shrunk our, um, the duration of our bus thing. Cause it's, you're, you're trying to make this, it's most of the kids, most of the time, you're not going to make the kindergarten unsafe, kindergarten are unsafe just for the benefit of the junior. So, yeah.
Right. And that's, I mean, that's one of those considering, you know, we have the, I think second largest geographic district
Yeah.
in the state. So busing is a different issue for us than it is in Barrington, just because the distances are farther. So our buses tend to, tend to take longer and that's why it's not a one size fits all process.
Right. Some places have put all the kids from one area on the same bus. And that's a mental thing where you go, oh, high schoolers with elementary kids. But it's doable. Our kids aren't middle school, right? It's with the high school in Barrington. Um, and they're, you know, they're fine. Yeah. Yeah. Well, nobody's died yet. Yeah. Yeah. Anyway, well, good luck with your process and I appreciate that you had this conversation because really that shows that you really care about the students, um, of South Kingston. Um, and hopefully I'll hear some good news the next year or two. I'll, I'll be watching.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you so much, Dr. Douglas. We appreciate your time and the wonderful information. Yeah, that will bring us to item B, discussion, action, lunch price increase. Mr. Pedraza.
Yes. Good evening. Thank you. And in his last official school committee meeting, I will turn this portion of meeting over to Mr. Patrick.
Thank you, Mr. Pedraza. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the committee. So I am here before you tonight to request an increase to our meal prices for school year twenty five, twenty six. And I have Mr. Aaron Shoemaker with me from Chartwells. He's the operations director to answer any questions you may have that I'm unable to answer and to correct me if I'm wrong for sure. Uh, so I just have a brief presentation for you here, and then I'll just be requesting you to, to make an action uh, to approve these, uh, these price increases. So if we could just jump right to the first slide. So as I stated, or, um, we're in the process of executing our final, uh, one year renewal with Chartwells for our food services, and we need to establish the meal rates as part of the contract provisions. And then we will submit our draft agreement to RIDE for full approval. So this is part of that process. It's my understanding that we have not increased meal prices since four, 2020. So essentially what you're looking at here is the current state. So that table in the top left there, you have our current meal prices. So our elementary breakfast price and our secondary breakfast prices are the same at a dollar twenty five. And in comparison to the state median, uh, they are both below. And by state median, essentially, if you look at those various charts that I have here, uh, those are our comparative districts. So just tried to get you a, a sample of some other districts across the state. Uh, so you could see how we are in context. Uh, looking at our lunch prices, our elementary current lunch price is two dollars and eighty cents, uh, just above the state median. And then I actually have a typo here. So I apologize. The, uh, the middle school lunch rate is actually really the secondary rate. So it's the same for the high school and the middle school at two dollars and ninety cents, uh, which is below the state median. And then that last one listed there that I have as high school should say adult, that's the adult price. Uh, so those are for non-students. And, uh, that is, uh, above the median as well. So all of these data in the, the table correspond to the charts. And so the, the lunch for the middle school should just say secondary. That's the same at the middle school and high school. And then the one below that uh, should say adult as opposed to high, which was, I was referring to the high school. So apologies for any confusion that might be there. But essentially this is where we are right now. And if we move to the next slide, you'll see, uh, our proposal. So essentially bottom line, we're proposing to increase prices across the board by 15 cents. So if you look at that chart on the left, this is, um, a schedule that's incorporated into our agreement with Chartwells. And this is from the ride template. So we don't innovate this at all. This comes directly from ride. We just, uh, changed the numbers. So if we were to keep, uh, meal prices the same as they are for this current school year, uh, we would be looking at a proposed deficit or a loss of about $21,000. And that's with all the price, uh, I'm sorry, all the, uh, increased expenditures on the food service management side and prices the same essentially. With the proposed price changes, the price increases of 15 cents, that deficit shrinks to about $4,800. Um, and just so you're aware, per our agreement with Chartwells, there's a provision that says any deficit exceeding the agreed to loss uh, will be covered by Chartwells up to their management services and general support services fee. So there's a fee that they charge uh, the district for general management and support. They will, uh, basically pay the excess deficit up to that amount. So for this year, school, uh, school year twenty four, twenty five, we have a not to exceed deficit of $3,439. We're currently operating in a surplus at the moment. So this, we're hoping that this is not even an issue at all. Any deficit that exceeds that, um, the, that amount of the, of Chartwell's, um, management and general services amount would have to be covered by fund balance already in the food service fund or the general fund. So that's the impact, the potential impact to the district. So for context, our current fund balance in the food service fund is about $236,000. So we could easily incur this deficit, so to speak, because there's enough fund balance there from previous surpluses. When we get, if we ever get to the point where that fund balance is drained, then we would need a transfer in from the general fund to offset that deficit. So hopefully that's clear. Um, so essentially in short, simply requesting the committee to approve meal prices at 15 cents, uh, across the board. And happy to entertain any questions you have prior to, uh, making any motions this evening.
I have a couple. Well, one, so what's her, we get reimbursed somehow for free lunch, right? There's no reduced anymore, right? It's just free. So what's that rate? How's that rate determined? And how does that fit into this?
The proposed reimbursement rates uh, for breakfast for free students is two dollars and forty four cents. For um, reduced price students, it's the same reimbursement. Full price students, we get reimbursed forty cents. For lunch, we get reimbursed proposed four dollars and sixty six cents for a free student. For a reduced price student, it's the same four dollars and sixty six cents, and then for a full price student, it's fifty three cents.
So when we get, so we get reimbursed less than the actual cost, so that actual cost is just money that we're. Contributor is made up from other, from the sales.
Correct.
However, it's made up.
Correct.
So how do we end up? I understand how we'd end up with a deficit, say someone doesn't pay their bill, but how do we end up with a surplus? If we're, if we're kind of meeting the cost with the payments of the, or.
I would think it'd be volume of meals.
So just. The uh. You know, a surplus is. You know, it's it's basically your expenditures don't exceed your revenue. Um, so in that, in this case, with enrollment in a declining state. Costs of goods in in. An elevating state. Um, you know, we've finally gotten to the point where now our expenditures are exceeding our revenues. Um, and that's where the the deficit comes from. Um, above and beyond the meals, there are à la carte sales, catering sales, vending sales that do contribute to your surplus. And at a much higher rate than your meals. Um, but currently at a four dollar and sixty six cent reimbursement rate for your free students. And then your paid price is only two dollars and ninety cents.
Right.
With a fifty three cent reimbursement rate. You're collecting about a dollar less for a paid meal than you are a free meal uh, in revenue. And just one last for me. There, so there was a, there was a, was a federal program to encourage buying local. Produce and local um, meats and which I believe it's gone. So has that affected us? Has that affected costs at all? Or is that just affected suppliers or? Yeah, so um, I believe it was about a billion dollars nationwide of local food funding that was uh, was cut. And um, that does affect our ability to partner with some of the farmers around the state that we have in the past years. Um, but one of the things that we've done in past years is those partnerships have been strategic. Um, and the spending has not just been frivolous. So some of the. The local foods that we've been purchasing, uh, we will be able to continue those partnerships, just maybe not in the same capacity.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve the proposed school lunch price increases for S Y twenty five, twenty six as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
You have to come back though, Ryan, just to say hi.
I can do that. Sure.
It'll bring us to number C, discussion, action, contract approval, interim chief financial officer.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract for the interim chief financial officer as recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Brings us to D, discussion, action, contract approval, digital literacy, communications, and transportation specialist.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract for the digital literacy, communications, and transportation specialist as recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Brings us to E, discussion, action, equity audit, planning for the public forum. I'll turn that over to the superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so a- as an update, uh, since the last time uh, we met. We have been in contact with the Johnny Cake Center. Um, and in order to run or we, or to refresh folks' memory is that we were going to try and do at least one. Uh, open within the, within the school, more than likely here at the high school before the close of the school year. Um, and in consultation and collaboration with Mr. Seeger. We are looking or we're investigating it basically a way to to try and get the community's feedback and reactions to elements of the. Uh, of the equity audit that they find important, as well as what this body finds important. And we've been leaning towards the best way to to do that is not necessarily to have another presentation and put things out there. On what people can, can read for themselves or that are in the executive summary. Uh, but or that they could be late for, or so what we were thinking or leaning towards is uh, running, depending on what is the the committee's. Guidance is we would run people through a series of, or we would run through a protocol so that people could potentially show up at any time. And they would have an avenue to either have a conversation with a building or or central office administrator to provide their. Feedback anonymously on a set of core issues, or to go around or travel through uh, the room or the setup. To provide only feedback of things that they were. For lack of a better word, interested in or were motivated by in order to give feedback on. Uh, and not basically to differentiate, if you will, the opportunities for. Feedback from the community who were able to attend. Or if people, or also to give options that if people were not uh, interested in giving uh, feedback, let's say if the. Feedback were occurring with post-it notes on a statistic that's mounted. That we would then provide a QR code or provide a computer there that someone could submit their feedback or their reactions to. Um, and so we've uh, started investigating various protocols, both whether it be through literature or uh, data protocols that we believe that we could run. Some people or groups through or attendees through. Um, and really, we've kind of hit it, hit a place where uh, we were actually looking to uh, to hear the committee's. Feedback tonight and basically uh, get your homework and and to to first hear what is the type of, what what are some of those big picture? Uh, things that you want the community, that you would like us to highlight, that you think uh. For, you know, for those who, you know, are interested but may not have found certain aspects or certain data points by digging through. The uh, equity audit that you would want us to highlight and get and make sure we get people's feedback on. So. Um, that thinking paired up with uh, Mr. Seeger. Um, unfortunately, I could not make it as I was called away on Friday. Um, walked the new youth center uh, with Johnny Cake to see how the space is conducive. Um, and this further reinforced our ideas for, you know, for having a a protocol or for having or for using the space. To uh. To facilitate those dialogues because, you know, it it's one thing to hold um, a meeting. In in a space like this, however, um. If it's a space like this and no one's attending or people don't want to show up because we're halfway through. Will that then diminish? Whereas if somebody walks in and says, oh, let me accompany you through here and let me put up some of the big statistics. And it's maybe not, it's not every statistic. We couldn't possibly do that, but those that we feel or that others feel are the most. Cause the most reaction or demand the most immediate action. And that we then use that to spur the community conversation. Um, after tonight's meeting and the discussion here, uh, we will meet actually tomorrow. Uh, again, with the Johnny Cake, with representatives from the Johnny Cake Center to hear uh, what the committee's feedback was, as well as to then. Uh, kind of reassess where we are, take a look at those dates. Um. And and opportunities and then continue to chart a course forward uh, for those to happen. Again, our goal is uh. Un- unless it becomes untenable, uh, is to do those before the close of this school year.
So would you like us to just? Give you some of our deals tonight, what our thoughts are on on most.
So I I'd be happy to have a, you know, a discussion to see if there's alignment or to see if there are themes that come across. Or if if people are, would like to discuss their ideas publicly and to, you know, if there becomes like. A some clear cut ones or ones that it might even become. Well, I'm not sure how you would do this, but I really think it's important to highlight. X, Y, or Z, or to ensure that we um, have extra communication in order to reach out to community. Members, X, Y, or Z. Um, so.
Um, I know Paula from your work here has put a lot of thought into this. Would you like to share? Okay.
So, um. I'm very, very. I was very excited for us to um, get this equity audit. Um, and I know. From the beginning of my term and probably a little bit before my first term. They were trying to get this equity audit in place, so I'm very pleased with the outcome of this report. And we'll try to summarize my takeaways and priorities. Most importantly, I strongly feel that if a separate committee is not formed. To review and address the audit and prioritize recommendations for strategic planning. That students. Wait a minute. That's the strategic planning committee must include most multiple. Let me back up again. I do apologize. I lost my train of thoughts and then. Okay, that's, that the strategic planning committee must include multiple stakeholders. These should include students, parents, educators, including teachers, assistants, support staff. School committee members and community members with expertise in education. I. Hold out the most important things to me in in this. Audit. However, I will say that every aspect of that audit is important to me. But if I want to prioritize for myself, I would. Prioritize professional development. Inconsistency across the district. Research finds that. Teachers' experience are influenced by school compliance and principal leadership. There's often a disconnect between principals' equities belief and their ability to optimize these beliefs. This is due in part to principals' tendency to focus on the technical solutions to solve immediate problems. Rather than systemic change. You can find that on forty one and most of both. Most of you probably read it. Over and over and over. I can tell you, I've only got through it once. And had to go back and skim pages, but you know, so professional development is the top. Student empowerment engagement is my second one. I'm not going to bore you with this. That's why I have it all written out for you. Um, special education. Align policies and practice. And I do want to just. Highlight something in the aligned policy and practice piece. Discipline. Chronic absentee. Graduation rates. And access to our CTE programs. By all students. So this is my piece and my contribution to how I think that we should approach. How we move forward with the recommendations from our equity order, and I'm hoping. That we could do as I requested earlier on when we first got the equity audit, and that is form a group of some kind. With all of these stakeholders that I named off. And begin to work from there to to the strategic plan to action. Because we need to take action on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. The great work. I appreciate the time you put into this. Michelle?
Paula. This is. Absolutely awesome. But I think some like. Telepathic communication because you hit on all the things that I wanted to emphasize. Especially. Um. The chronic absenteeism we had in the past, we had. Um, like a a. A plan slash protocol in place to address. Chronic absenteeism across the district. Um, the, um. We also, very early in my. Time on the school committee. The, um. I think it was the. I don't want to mention, I I think it was a newspaper in the state that published. Uh, suspension rates. Um. For different districts, we were right up there at the top and. And um. That the African American students and the Native American students were being suspended. At such a higher rate. We also had a. Committee, a group of of educators that was working on that, and we tracked that very carefully. The one thing that came out of the report to me that was really upsetting, very upsetting. Was students were quoted as. Either not being guided to. Honors and AP classes. Or 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 they would go there and then be questioned by an educator as to whether they belong. And being treated by the students. That they don't belong. Um. We need to, we need to do something. I agree with Paula on um, like. Dividing it into um, categories, but I wonder. What people think about doing. Um, come up with our categories. I. In my opinion, we can use Paula's work as a starting place. And do a roundtable discussion. Get the community in here. Tell the students that they're welcome to come and their input. Is valued. And have, um, you know, like one topic per table. And um, as. Um. Mr. Pedraza suggested earlier, like the post-it notes, we can, we can have. Um. Uh, um. Mechanism for. People writing their thoughts and suggestions on post-it notes and then, you know, rotating. Throughout, but we would have to do that as a work session without. A business meeting going on. Thank you, Paula.
Does anybody else have an idea they want to?
Uh, I think we were given homework to.
We, we, you were. If if you'd like to just submit it and have more time to think about it, that's fine, too.
Well, no, I submitted. Mine.
Oh, okay, good.
And. And. I don't know if everybody did, and I don't want to put everybody on the spot, but I would like to see everybody's. In a consolidated report, all of what everybody, you know, I love that Paula actually printed hers on broad for everybody. But I would love to see everybody's input and know where everybody is thinking. In terms of, you know, where focus should be and. Um, and then start looking at what next steps should we be taking based on some of the priorities that we we all agree to start moving forward on.
Um, that's a great suggestion. Terry can um. It should have gone to Terry. So.
I gave Terry homework.
Okay, so. She can compile it and we can get that out to everybody so they can see what everybody's thoughts are, how they align. I think, like Michelle said, I think a lot of us will be on the same page with a lot of these items. And I think that's going to be the most comprehensive way to look at this. But if anybody else would like to just share if there's like one thing that they would like to make sure that the superintendent and assistant superintendent hears, that would be helpful, just just to keep it short tonight. But I think it's good for the community to also hear us have this conversation.
The one aspect that I would just like to highlight is is that in terms of everything that I've heard so far, I'm in fierce in fierce agreement with the the one piece, though, that would be that if we are talking about the community at large, and if we are talking about the community's reaction, when we start getting into things like professional development, yes, we have, you know, we have bargaining unit pieces. We also then would do that with teachers, you know, while we wouldn't exclude it. Generally, in the back of my mind, you know, in a in a community forum, professional development and on all of the recommendations, it would be high up on a needs overall because of obviously the professional development and what students experience every day by the adults we employ to do that. It is high up, but I don't, my wonder is, will that get a community reaction? Or is that something where the community would be like, you should be asking the people who need the professional development or want? So that so that's in terms, and again, perhaps, you know, that that's my, that's my own bias of going into that, that the community at large might not have something to say. And so that's something that, no, you you should have that out there for the community to react to so that there that you can hear firsthand. And so that's, you know, in terms of the pieces out there that if, you know, again, trying to go to the community at large, obviously having a focus group and going through the the equity audit with students at the high school level and the middle school level or even the elementary, you know, or pieces to talk about or get people's reaction to is going to vary based on those target audiences. And so if we are having the community at large who's interested in what the community and what the equity audit had to say, what do you believe would ignite or would drive the most participation? And if it's everything, then that then that's it. And we'll make sure we have an aspect to incorporate everything. If it's something, though, that is specific to the experiences of the community. So, for example, number two on Ms. Whitford's list is student and parent engagement in a community forum of parents to then say, what does parent, what does meaningful parent engagement look like? In the same way that, you know, that that would be something that I would think would be a focus or we we would would be a good use of people's time or if we focus there. Conversely, having students and saying, hey, what does parent engagement look like while they might have something to say? Are we going to get the same type of meaningful feedback or the reactions to it and the information that we need so that we can go to these groups and as we develop the strategic plan and make sure that as we are setting up the operations to address those, that those resonate with those stakeholders that are being targeted through those programs and and interventions. So long way around the barn to say, we can do, we can create a public forum in which all aspects or as many aspects as possible of the audit are touched for the community to react to. However, we'll need to get very specific in each one of those. However, if there were, let's just say, three or four domains that we want to get the community's reaction to because it pertains most to the community and their experience, that then would shape the protocol or what we're working with for right now.
If you don't mind, I'd like to react to that.
Please.
The as I'm hearing you kind of talk through your thoughts, what what's going through my mind is a lot of this has been going on for multiple decades. And so a lot of the feedback, we have quite a few folks who walk these halls twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years ago, experienced the same thing and their kids experienced the same thing and their kids are now currently experiencing the same thing. So having, and they still live in our community. They don't, they don't, we have a, we have a pretty heavy group that doesn't leave South Kingstown collectively, myself included. But so I think it would be wise to have it open to the full community because the folks we need to hear from are the folks who have been living it generationally as as well on on all and in all facets of it. And experiences like I walked through hallways with with folks who experience have completely different, like we had an experience and their experience was different than mine. And and I didn't know it at the time and then until you reflect and have these open conversations. But as a fifty-plus-year-old person, I may not be a parent and I may not have students in here, but I still have a have a story to bring to the table that could be helpful. So so I think there I think it would be wise to keep it open to the community at large, but making sure that we, I like Michelle's roundtable that perspective. We've done that in the past. I don't think we're just going to get like random folks. I think it'll be a very, a very core group of people who have have experienced the halls of South Kingstown.
Absolutely. And in terms of, you know, I didn't mean that in terms of the, oh, well, just for people who are currently engaged. I just meant that the community at large and then, you know, we'll have one for our students. We'll have one for teachers, you know, in terms of when we're when they where the audit is calling for us to to get specific. Well, then then absolutely, we'll get that, we'll get that macro. But how, in many cases, how, you know, we want to have as many people react as possible and as many people. So I'm definitely not trying to to narrow it down, especially if anything, I want the breadth in there for and everybody to feel welcome as well as to start to address in the equity audit that we are going to do something about it and we are willing to not only be empathetic to what has happened before and what is and understand what is in place now. But the equity audit calls for leadership to step up forward and make sure that those positions about where we're headed are known. And this is the, this is the first step towards that. And accordingly, we need to make I'm committed to making sure it is as open to as many people as possible so that we can not only hear those stories, but also that everybody gets that reaction or, you know, gets heard in real time.
I also think it's very important that we have a way of capturing people's thoughts and feedback. I do like to put it on a sticky note and, you know, and maybe it's answering those open-ended questions, but somehow that people feel safe writing their real experience down because that's can be hard. But that we have a way of capturing it so that we can, you know, look at all those thoughts, feelings and 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 really be able to digest how people, you know, had those shared experiences and and hopefully, I would also like people to bring their ideas for solutions. Because, you know, we all lived a different reality in some cases. And, you know, the person that lived it may have the best ideas on what they needed at that time to feel welcome and and safe in the schools here. So I agree, it needs to be, whether it's a roundtable or walking through stations, it it just has to be a way to capture that information from our community at large. You know, our older students would be important to listen to at this point as well. And then we do need, this is going to be highly dependent on our educators to come up with how do we solve these huge issues that, you know, have been going on, like Kate said, for decades, that could be systemic in our schools. They're not going to be solved easily or quickly. But we we are beginning a way forward with the audit itself. So this is so important and maybe we do need a committee to to look at possible solutions. And the way I see it is these are going to be multifaceted and multilayered. What's going to go on at the high school is very different than at the elementary schools. But I for one think that these, especially our academic problems, we can't let them get past those early grades because they get harder and harder to resolve. So we need some sort of way to to look at success right in that, you know, kindergarten, first, second grade. And, you know, put our resources to making sure that we're, you know, starting those kids off with a truly good academic foundation. All of these things are going to take resources and that's another piece of this, right? Because I think we've all kind of come are on the same page to, if we need those resources, we need to go and have that conversation with the town council. I'm excited, like Paula, that we're starting this process. We've got a long way to go. But, you know, it starts with the first step. So at this point, I'm going to ask Terry to compile everything, get it all to all of us. Mr. Pedraza can look for, you know, those themes that seem most important to most of us. And also the key thing is too, is our administrators, our professional educators, the teaching staff, you know, what what do they see? They're in those classrooms every day educating those students. So with with all of those inputs, putting together a forum again that we try to capture from the communities and it that the attendance. Their thoughts, feeling, feedback in a way to capture it. That's what I would hope to see during this forum. Now, anybody else add?
Well, a few things that stood out to me. One is, I think a lot of this keeps coming back to professional development and we have very little time for it. And I think one of the solutions we have to look at is how we get more professional development time because right now, I think it's really one day, right? One day a year. That has to start now, right? The committee, I assume, is meeting and talking about what that day is going to be soon because it's beginning of the year when you start doing it. And so much of what we're talking about here is about professional development. And if we don't have more than one day a year, then we're talking about years, maybe a decade before we get to everything that really needs to be done from this audit. So part of our solution, and I I don't have a solution in mind, but part of our solution has to be, how do we get more training and professional development time for our teachers? And it might have to take some real creative thinking. And it's not just teachers. It's everyone who interacts with the students, right? So, I mean, that's part of what I what I took away from this is I kept thinking this is training, 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 training. And when you add up that list, it's just, it's just too long for the system we have now to to address it in a timely manner. Some of it, a lot of it's about cultural competency, which is a difficult thing for for teachers. And that's one of the things. So I think data is really important, but the things that stood out to me that I stopped, that kind of stopped me and I read again were mostly like the results of the interviews from the students and from the families. And the data tells you one thing, but the real story is talking about the student experience because data is not going to tell you. Like, my kid just doesn't participate because they feel uncomfortable with the lesson because it's so different from their lived experience. So they can't participate in class. Right? That's something they tell you. It's going to show up maybe in grades because they're not doing as well in school because they can't engage. But so we need to get that out. And I'm, I'm really concerned about the the imbalance and discipline. It's Paula pointed out. Because I think it's a compounding problem. Most of our disciplinary action involves removing students from the classroom environment, which means they're not learning and they're falling further behind. And, you know, I know a lot of kids, when they fall behind, they're smarter and they get frustrated and that causes a new disciplinary program. You know, it keeps compounding, compounding. And I think if you invited in the parents of students who were involved in those disciplinary actions, if you want to get people out and get feedback, I think those are parents who would probably respond, right? The ones who had been suspended or even in-school suspensions and say, walk us through that because again, you know, it could be that an earlier, you know, if it's sort of the MTSS model, right? If we could intervene in the classroom in in a way that's effectively keeps them out of the in-school suspension and out of school suspension, then we save a lot of people's time. We also keep that kid in the in the room where they should be. But we have this imbalance and I'm not sure we know exactly why, we guess, but I think it's something we should focus on and that's that's a specific group. We know who they are. Whose kids have been through those disciplinary actions who we could reach out to and say, we want to talk to you about what that experience was like and why you think, you know, this is this is happening. And I think it's a tough, that's a tough room to be in to get that feedback. But I think there's going to be a lot of difficult things that that we have to do. And I mean, again, one of the things I kept coming back to is we have curriculum in the elementary school that has some of the components we need, but they're optional in the curriculum. And so they're not being used partially probably because the teachers haven't been trained well enough in how to use them. And I know when we first got that curriculum, you know, it was given to us, you know, RIDE let us choose between two at the time. We picked one in like July and the teacher, you know, teacher's got this book and we're trying to get ahead. And so I think they're just to the point where they know the 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 core of that. And now we need to try to get them to try it. But again, you know, it goes back to that professional development question. So, you know, I I keep coming back to that in my head is how do we get the teachers the tools they need to, if we're only going to going to do this once a year.
I agree with Mr. Shear on the, you know, we're not going to get this accomplished in one professional development day a year. But and and I I think tonight I've probably said this more than I've said it in ten years, but back in the day when I was first on the school committee, we had a subcommittee called the Accountability Subcommittee. And one of the things we did was we sent out a job job satisfaction survey. And one of the questions on that job satisfaction survey was about professional development. And that particular year, the teachers overwhelmingly through the district at all levels came back with what they wanted for professional development at that time was more in technology. And the professional development for the following year was able to be geared around that and modified for various levels and various needs. And, you know, we kept saying, you know, if we insist that the teachers differentiate instruction, then we should be differentiating professional development. So, I mean, that's one thing that we might be able to do. And then I just want to make a personal comment. I did my my points of like what ticked me off and what I liked and what I didn't like and have to have a conversation with Ms. Marsha Salt because somehow I emailed it. I don't think she got it. It's not in my sent emails when I came back from my island paradise. It's not in my inbox. It's not in my drafts. So I think it's lost in cyberspace between Lock Island. You know, I guess the ferry wasn't running the day I sent it to you. And so I have to recreate it. So give me, give me a couple of minutes. Terry and I'll recreate it and.
I have a question for Ms. Pedraza. So my question is, who is a part of the Professional Development Committee?
I'll let Mr. Seager as he oversees that committee and.
Mr. Seager runs it. Okay.
Put him off the spot for the specific competition.
Mr. Seager, could you tell me who is on that committee?
Sure. So a, as you most certainly recall, that Professional Development Committee is a product of MOA, you know, formed between the committee and the, the teachers' union. And there are currently six administrative team members, as well as six NEA members.
Six administrative team members. Are they all building principals?
No, not all principals. I, I sit on the committee as well as Mr. Pedraza. And we have an assistant principal and numerous principals.
Well, this is, I want to say this about the, my perspective of that. I don't feel like every person or every educator, support staff or anybody in our buildings across the district that may need professional development can get that if they're not involved. We have, now NEA, I know that's part of a collective bargaining. They do have a say on what that some of the educators do get for professional development. But on the other side, when we get to the support staff, like our TAs and et cetera, like that, those folks need to have a voice too. Those folks need to be able to say, I think it would be a good idea if we as a unit had this specific professional development. Because in my opinion, professional development is important no matter what you do for a point.
Absolutely. Ms. Whitford and I, I just want to say, we're, we're, we're talking about, I know, kind of straight into professional development as part of what we're talking about for fixing the equity audit, but I think what we can do is potentially put that on our future agenda to talk about professional development specifically. I think we're going a little too far down that, that path.
Thank you. Because it's part of our, what we're having a discussion about. It's in our equity audit and we are talking about our equity audit. So I'm not off strip. I asked the question, he gave me the answer and that's that. Thank you.
Okay. We, we ensure that, or we're in the process of making sure that we extend the voice to everybody in the district in terms of professional development offerings. And we also need to balance, especially in this equity audit, as well as, you know, what is has been negotiated. And in terms of that time, we are getting, trying to get creative. And in that time, the, the later, by having the transition grades, the first day of school this year, we're creating more professional development time. Next year in the creation of our schedule, we can take a look at potential avenues to create that. However, you know, in terms of making sure ultimately in the equity audit, professional development is going to be a good balance between wants and needs. And we will attempt to make sure that people get not only what they want, but ultimately whether they, what this equity audit says that we need and do so in a way that is, is balanced in the needs and the pedagogy of adult learners. And, you know, and making sure that those voices are heard regardless of which bargaining their unit they're in. And that's why I will be pleased to share some of the professional development plans that have, you know, in, in later field memos with you all. As well as later on this week, when the Professional Development Subcommittee meets again to, to, to share how the voices of all are, are being included and considered.
Thank you guys so much. I think we do have a lot of information to put the form together. So Terry has informed me that she has the document compiled. And so there's a few people like myself who I put the document together and I too did not email it. So I, we'll get that to her. Michelle will get hers to her. We'll get that out as soon as possible. So mea culpa. With that, I'm going to move on to the School Committee Summer Professional Development Workshop. What used to be called the Retreat. So we do have a date and a time. August 12th, eight thirty to two P M. So thank you for that doodle pole, Terry. And I think we've got time for, uh, to work out what we want to see on that. So we'll, we'll start putting that together. We do need to work on the the bylaws. We do know that we'll have to work on that. We want to get goals. Those will definitely be on the agenda for that day, but we'll look at what everybody said and put together an agenda for that, for the, for the workshop. So, but if anybody has any concerns or something that they would particularly like to see, just you can email me privately and to make sure that I know if it's something extremely important to you, we'll make sure that we get to that. So I am going to move on to the next one, which is Subcommittee Updates.
Ms. Vera, are we also going to have a school committee meeting that night?
The, the workshop is our meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Okay, so Subcommittee's. Has anybody met and that? I mean, I mean, like wellness, obviously Brad had the time to share what they've been talking about, but other, other Subcommittee's? Yep. Okay, great. That'd be good.
So Strategic Planning met for our initial meeting with the School Committee members, the administration and our community members. And talked about you know, kind of a plan of moving forward. Elected appointed volunteers chairpersons and a secretary. And scheduled our next meeting for moving forward. We are going to try to act in a capacity as a steering committee so that we can gather information from various groups of people rather than having all of those groups sit on the Strategic Planning Subcommittee. We can pull them in as we need their information. And personally, I read the equity audit after our strategic planning meeting. And I think that equity audit gives us a lot of direction for our strategic.
Sounds great. Thank you. Can I ask just a quick question? Do you have a timeline yet or still hasn't been worked out? Like when you kind of see having the new strategic plan kind of okay. But thanks. That's great. Good. At least you've got a meeting under your belt and a good start. Legislative Liaison Update. Back to you, Michelle.
I, I actually have not heard any, anything from our reps and senators. I know the because I, I have notes there with the email that didn't make the ferry. The I know the cellphone bill was up last week. There's some things coming in front of the Senate Finance Committee this week. And I think we all get those general emails from Mr. Duffy. And, um, but there hasn't come anything across like we need testimony on this bill or that bill.
Okay, thank you so much. And that brings us to number I, School Building Committee Update.
So I have a so I have a nice fresh update because I, I missed the first half of the meeting because I shot over the town hall to just kind of go through our most recent process and project update with the Town Council and Chris Spiegel from Leftfield. Moving forward, we're just kind of like one step in front of the other, making sure that we keep our eye on keeping our schedule tight and that we are not kind of missing a beat with any decisions that are needing to be made. So Thursday night, we're having a quick half hour meeting right before we go into, right before our team goes into the planning board to solidify. And, and that one's really, as far as the site plan goes and the impact on the community and the area. So we're going in prior to that to number one, announce the appointment of John Gould to our School Building Committee as our facilities representative. He's actually getting, if I'm not mistaken, he's getting sworn in and appointed today at the, at the council meeting after I left. We will be going over some environmental test results that were completed. And then we will be putting forward a recommendation around the design development plans. There will be kind of a, we'll be, we'll be having a robust discussion around that. So there's a, there's a definite potential that we're going to be continuing that discussion to next Tuesday as well. So we'll have our quick half hour meeting Thursday from five thirty to six. And then we are already proactively putting a Tuesday, I think that's June third on the schedule to continue that conversation to make sure that we're not missing anything, but also to wrap up any sort of discussions before the next town council meeting. So we have that kind of pending. Once the recommendations are completed around design development, we will then be giving that recommendation to the Town Council for the ninth. And hopefully they will approve our design. And then on the 10th, it'll be being brought here and hopefully we will all also approve that. And then the next day on the 11th, we'll be moving forward with our next milestone with Ride and submitting our, this next phase of our design. It's not the final goal yet, but every step, we're, we're getting a step closer. And then we'll just can basically continue with our foot on the gas through rest of June, July into August and fingers crossed, everything goes according to plan. And we'll be looking at putting a shovel in the ground. Either, you know, around the last week of August, first week of September. Hundred percent, a hundred percent, you're doing a party. Shovel in the ground party, Kate's house. So that, that's kind of where we are and we are just doing everything we can. And if it means, like, we just did it now, we, we threw the half hour meeting on the calendar for the 29th and we're throwing this meeting on Tuesday to make sure that our dot, eyes are dotted and t's are crossed. We are not missing dates. We are pushing, the foot is on, the gas pedal is hitting the floor. We're, we're moving forward, but with due diligence and many eyes on the, eyes on the prize. So that's all I got unless anybody has any questions. Oh, thank you for that. We do have a public forum scheduled for June 5th, open to the public, six to eight. It'll take place in Town Hall Chambers. We will be, one of the council members wanted to make sure we, we reiterated, it will be livestreamed. It will not be an interactive live streaming forum. It is literally being, it's being recorded and livestreamed like always on YouTube, like it would be a, a regular building committee meeting. But it's a two-hour public forum. Open for, you know, there'll be question and answer pieces. The new design color scheme will be being, will be being shown to the community as well as just various various highlights and getting feedback from folks. So that'll be exciting as well. So thank you for the reminder.
Just have, question, when do you expect the construction to have to start with a new road?
The goal will, would be for that to happen end of August, September. Like, once we put shovel in the ground, that's our number one goal is to get that temporary road put in here so that when our students start in September and their first day of school, that is already mapped out. And so that the kids aren't, or the kids and the parents aren't learning a different flow two weeks later. The goal is to have day one that's in place and our plan is in place. We do have a contingency for that. Like if things go sideways and that can't happen, we have a contingency flow that will take place in the front of, of Columbia. But that is not our goal. Our goal is to get this taken care of in a safe, secure way. And so that it's the least disruptive to our families in the community. So wrapping that up, I will gladly make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Very gladly second that.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.